This meeting will be held in person. It is recommended that individuals not vaccinated, wear a mask. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, motion approved.
Motion by Mr. DeMonica?
Second.
By Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I know, we will add that in, we'll do that right now. The next item on the agenda would normally be the pledge of allegiance, so we will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, welcome everyone to our first in-person meeting since March of 2020. It's nice to see all of you here tonight. So the next items on the agenda are related to the Fiscal Management Subcommittee, which is discussion and revote to approve resolutions. And we have a number of resolutions related to our construction projects, so I'm going to handle this over to the Chair of the Fiscal Management Subcommittee, Mr. DeMonica.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, the first item is SCPR eight twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven, Owners' Representation Services for Payment with Colliers International. We have an invoice from Colliers in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. The Colliers invoice gets paid directly from the seventy-nine million dollar bond after, and this goes through the Building Committee as well. So I would move motion that we make the payment to Colliers in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. What? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so Mr. DeMonica makes a motion to approve SCPR eight twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven. This, all of these resolutions have also been approved by the Building Committee earlier this week. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorella. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
I'd want to write seven to zero on these. All right. Next is SCPR zero eight twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight, a resolution, power on the Cumberland School Committee to purchase from Kidderidge of Agawam, Mass. for cafeteria furniture at the high school and/or the Cumberland, I'm sorry, the community school, in the amount not to exceed forty-four thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty cents. I'd ask that we table this to the next meeting, School Committee, because there are some additional charges that will be forthcoming on this, and the business manager felt we could hold this until the twelfth. So I would ask that we table this one to the twelfth.
Okay, so we are tabling SCPR eight twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight.
We need to go.
Thirty-eight, so we have a motion to table it?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero, that motion is tabled.
Thank you. This is SCPR zero eight twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to issue a change order to E and E Systems of Canton, Mass. for leveling floors around the CHS trans building, in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Again, this went through the Building Committee first, the change order, and like I have a picture here shows, in one case, one floor is out over two inches, I'm sure it's settling over the years for the building, and nothing extraordinary, so it went through the Building Committee, and I would move passage of payment of twelve thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution SCPR eight twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Okay. Next is a resolution, is SCPR zero eight twenty twenty-one dash forty, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to issue a change order to HV Collins of Providence, Rhode Island, for an adjustment to alternate one, a reduction of scope of work is no longer creating an outside, it's a reduction of scope of work and no longer creating an outside entrance to the Human Resource Office, resulting, resulting in a building credit of thirty thousand, sixty-five dollars. The school district has decided not to pick the alternate number one, and replace that alternate with an indoor dual modification, so it went through the Building Committee as well. So I move that we take the credit of thirty thousand, sixty-five dollars from HV Collins.
Motion to approve SCPR eight twenty twenty-one dash forty for the credit, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorella, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Just give me one second here. Item number forty-one, all right, so the next one is a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to issue a change order to HV Collins of Providence for additional work in the new offices for the Assistant Superintendent and staff, the amount is fifty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents, they've got to deal with doors and so forth, the area has to have space for at least six employees to work. The cost that went through the Building Committee, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars, ninety-six cents, shall come from the seventy-nine million dollar bond, and I would move approval.
We have a motion to approve SCPR eight twenty twenty-one dash forty-one, do we have a second?
Next.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Madam Chair, I'll take care of these building items for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. DeMonica. The next item on the agenda is discussion and revote to approve the revised twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar.
Good evening, Madam Chair, you have in your packet some three calendar options, A, B, and C. The genesis for coming back to you with a calendar is now we have December sixth as the parent-teacher night, so I wanted to give you three options to look at. Up front, I'll tell you, I'm recommending option A, let me take you through them, if you could. If you turn to option A, you will see in here, the teacher, first teacher day back would be the twenty-seventh on a Friday, Monday, August thirtieth would be grades one through nine, and Tuesday, the thirty-first, everyone comes back. If you did this model, we're adding on one day in June to accommodate the December sixth parent-teacher night, so you'd get out on June twenty-first, June twentieth, as you now know, is a new federal holiday, Juneteenth. So that's option A, adding a day on in June. Option B, you could add a day on in August, but my only concern there would be, with school construction right now, every day counts, and taking a day away from that would make me a little nervous, but that is an option. In option B, we have a day earlier, as you can see in the handout, bless you. And option C, if you wanted another option, I know there was some discussion at some point of elimination of one of the Muslim holidays on May third, I wouldn't recommend you do that, but that would be another option, but I would go to option A for your consideration to add a day on in June to compensate for the December sixth parent-teacher night. Have it answer any questions?
Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, I'm sorry, we know how many, if any, Muslim students we have in the district enrolled?
I would not know sitting here right now, I do not.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent Thornton, could you just give us an update on bringing the students back in the two tiers? I thought in the past we did pre-K in kindergarten in one day, maybe tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade in one day, and did them in advance of the other grades, but this seems to be the opposite.
I did ask how it was done here, pre-COVID, and this is the model that was done, I believe, in nineteen twenty, it was just the first day, one through nine, second day, the pre-K, K twelve, so we can certainly change that or modify that if you want.
So grades ten through twelve would always come in the second day, grade nine goes by themselves, so that you have the school by themselves, and then the others come in, and then you said, Dr. Thornton, the pre-K, what did you say?
Right now, grades one through nine in this model could come in on Monday, August thirty, and Tuesday, the thirty-first, you could get all students in. If you want to modify that, that's certainly within your purview.
The question has been asked by several parents if we will be doing as we did in the previous years, and last year could have been different, however, we didn't start, we didn't start in person, so that could possibly be the reason.
If you would like, I could put this back on for the twelfth, I have Cindy research the last three or four years for you and see what the calendar was, and the twelfth is fine to do this, it wouldn't really, you know, be a big difference.
I was just saying, I wouldn't want to wait another week for parents in case they have to change their plans.
Mm-hmm.
Better check.
Madam Chair, Mr. Collins?
Anna might have some history on this?
It's on now.
Can you hear me?
I guess so. So good evening, everyone. I think I could provide some, some background as to why these dates were chosen. There are, there were some PD days that were typically utilized at the beginning of the school year where it allowed for the system that you're referring to, Mrs. Smith, and with current negotiations around the PD days, and with some of the decisions that are being floated around with regard to that, it led to this particular model that Dr. Thornton is sharing with you. In addition to that, the administrative team, Dr. Thornton got us together, and we started to talk about what they preferred, and this was the administrative vote on that particular model for reentry. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, with, has there been any discussion at the state level about snow days being eradicated because of remote learning?
I doubt they will take a position on that affirmatively, there has been some discussion of maybe less of a need, but as you know, in Cumberland, there are days when we maybe have a snowstorm, and we have some power outages, and there's some Wi-Fi challenges, so I don't think it's a unique or like a blanket thing they can say across every city or town, but I think there's certainly probably more opportunity now to not have snow days if we can make sure everyone has Wi-Fi, but yeah, nothing at Ride definitive.
All right, so the only reason I'm asking is because if you look at option A, option A ends on a Monday, so if we don't have snow days, that is a really bad day as an educator because you go that weekend, and it's like, not just the teachers, I mean, they're going to come to work, but the parents, the attendance levels are going to be really low in that last day, but if we have snow days, it's kind of a moot point, because I'm looking at the other options. Option B changes the start date, parents already have vacation plans, it starts the Friday before the other, the originally scheduled date, so to Mrs. Rogalski's point, it's kind of late to be changing. So if people have plans for that weekend, New Hampshire or whatever, they're going to have to cancel or skip the first day of school, so I think we have to toss out option B. And then option C, we don't know how many Muslim students we have, we could go with option C if we have no Muslim students, but it is.
Yeah, as far as.
Well, I assume we do, so, but without that, I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As far as snow days, I think typically, you know, you're seeing in Cumberland, you know, a couple of days each year have, historically have been snow days, so having none, to me, would be unusual for Cumberland. I know there are a lot of power issues in parts of the town, so I'm not sure we can guarantee Wi-Fi, so I'd be leaning towards, you're probably going to have two, three, that puts you now at, what, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth. I know there's some discussion at a principal's meeting today, I just heard about, where they were talking about in some communities, starting on September ninth, which that would alarm me because now you're getting out in late June without snow days. Yeah, so I think either way, there are pros and cons on this, but I think you'll have a couple of snow days if you're looking at the history of Cumberland, it puts you midweek probably. Thank you.
Mrs. Fether?
Yes, I, I do know that we have some Muslim students, I don't know the exact number, but I do know that we do have some. I just wanted to throw my support behind option A. Oh, I could, yes, I could actually motion unless there's anyone else.
I, I just have a clarifying comment, Dr. Thornton, on option A, because June twentieth was added, the federal holiday, Juneteenth, so actually, option, does, option A end on June twenty-first, on the Tuesday?
Correct, if you look at the calendar on the right, you see a box that says classes not in session for students, and June twenty is that Juneteenth, but you are correct, the twenty-first, in option A, is the last day of the Tuesday.
Yeah, after a holiday, but, yeah. Thank you, that was my clarification, but in addition to that, it also, I apologize, it also cuts the week away so that you have the Monday, Tuesday, and Tuesday going back to school, and then leaving parents with the daycare or camp options where it's part week, so I'm definitely concerned with leaving that and ending on the Tuesday, and I'm just wondering if there's a way to adjust somewhere else. That, that's my only thought, and I don't know if that's, you know, we shouldn't be touching any of the religious holidays, but I don't know with parent or teacher days and all of those things, what could be readjusted, could that happen at the beginning of the school year or?
I mean, folks make plans in advance, so it's hard to change on them.
Right.
I would tell you, historically, some districts, as you know, have looked at the February vacation, and that's either been, you know, a very positive conversation or not, not so positive, but that's probably your place you could look, is February, if you wanted to maneuver, I think.
As we have in the past years, because we've only, we've taken the first few days out and then, okay.
Mr. DeMonica?
Madam Chair, was the June, Juneth, the June twentieth, is that a federal holiday?
Yes.
And it was approved by the federal government, okay.
Yeah, so that's a new addition since the last time we voted on the calendar.
So I would like to motion to, to approve option A for an additional day in June.
Okay, so we have a motion for option A, do we have a second or second for discussion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorella. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it six to one. Thank you.
Just, Madam Chair, just one question, the union is aware of this, Mr. Dr. Thornton?
They are.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, is a consent agenda item, we don't actually have to vote on this, but there are personnel actions or personnel announcements, so Mrs. Dunkinson, Director of HR, will read those to us.
Great, I just have a slew of coaching appointments, the first is the high school. Carrie Carpenter will be the boys cross-country coach, Jonathan Shakur, football for freshmen, Silas Copeland, football assistant coach, Martin Crowley, girls cross-country, David DeJesus, girls volleyball varsity, Erin Genero, field hockey varsity, Nancy Genero, field hockey junior varsity, Gabriel Gonzalez, football junior varsity, Cara Gorman, girls soccer JV, Brandon Hanaway, girls tennis varsity, Anastasia Harris, girls volleyball JV, William Hogan, football JV assistant, John Hoxsey, girls soccer varsity, Joshua Lima, football varsity, Lorenko Lopes, boys soccer varsity, Trevor Lopes, boys soccer JV, Rachel Powell, cheerleading, and at the middle school, Sean Connolly, cross-country, North Cumberland Middle School, and Grace Henson, cross-country, McCourt. I did want to say, I got your message regarding notations regarding new coaches or renewal of coaches, and that will be included on all further reports in your folders.
Madam Chair, do we know which ones are new on this list, if you recall?
I don't have that, I, I know, I don't think there's any new off-the-street hires, but there are, there will be new soccer coaches at the middle school, I do know that we're hiring.
Okay, no, I just, I think it's good for the school community, just to know it's a new hire.
We're going to be adding another column with notes in it that will say either renewal, which means that they've been a coach for us before, or new hire.
All right, great, thank you.
Well, I think it's obvious that there's a new girls cross-country coach.
He's a.
I mean, it is, but when you get a list like this with fifteen, twenty names, it'd be nice just for us to have it, you know, noted that's a new hire for the, they can hire anyone they want now, which is good, but just, we have a note, it's a new hire, that's all.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. Mr. DeMonica?
Do we need to vote on this?
Nope.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion of plans for returning to school, and I wanted to say before we start this that this is a discussion tonight, it's not a vote, there will be a vote on this, but we wanted Dr. Thornton to have the opportunity to share what he knows so far and his thinking, for us to be able to talk about that openly, for the public to be able to give their comments to this as well, and then this will be scheduled for a vote likely at the next open meeting, so just wanted everyone to understand that. So, Dr. Thornton?
Sure. Madam Chair, our last meeting, which was virtual, I did talk to you about the intention of trying to bring a plan to you end of July, early August, and as you know, it's been quite fluid, this whole situation. Ride actually did put out the planning template for us on August second, it's due to the state August thirteenth. Mr. DeMonica and his team have been working on it along with myself, and we're actually almost close to completion already with a couple of open items which you guys are going to talk about. Having said that, I do want to share some things I can share with you tonight on the plan, and you know, have your reaction to those. So I'll start with the first concept, obviously, this is a full return plan for all students, and there really, there is no DL option next year per Ride, you would be, either be in school or you would be homeschooling, barring any, extending circumstance, like a hospitalization, that kind of thing. Regular classroom capacities with safeguards. Safeguards, as you know from last year, include seating charts in the classrooms and the buses for contact tracing. Staying diligent with cleaning protocols, three feet of distance when possible, and I say that because in some cases it might be, you know, two and a half feet, it really depends on the classroom footprint. Ventilation, four to six air changes, you all know about that conversation from last year. Air purifiers still running in the classrooms, hand washing, hand sanitizing, still practiced self-monitoring for symptoms, so obviously, we stress to folks if they feel symptomatic, either adult or child, that wouldn't come to school. Testing protocol, the same you had last year, the seven-day protocol with a negative test. In terms of schedules, really looking to run the regular student's schedules, and that includes things like special education students with their peers in the classroom, if you recall, last year, they had situations where those kids were separated, and that was really problematic for the education for the students, so they would be in the classroom, recess would be recess. Lunch is in the lunchroom with some variation when possible, for example, at the high school, they're looking to run an additional lunch venue right outside here in the foyer for some students to try to spread out more, so I think each school would be creative when they can, but basically lunch is, is running, some schools might try to stagger students, if you will, but so that really depends on each, each building. What else can I tell you? Busing, busing is regular capacity, windows open when the temperature permits it certainly, seating charts, as I mentioned, on the buses. Federal regulations do dictate we must mask on a bus, that is not an option for us to debate, that's a federal regulation, they must mask on the bus, so that is, that piece. As far as masking, let's talk about masking. As I spoke to many of you over the phone last couple of weeks, there was really a discussion statewide around, I'll call it choice with a metric, where, you know, a lot of districts were looking at, you know, watching it carefully, and, you know, trying to have a system where you could have a mask kick in at a certain threshold of, of infection. Ride actually has a document, part of their guidance, it obviously starts color-coded, looks like this, they actually have the metric, and just to boil it down for you, they have low, zero to nine cases per hundred thousand, moderate, ten to forty-nine cases, substantial, fifty to ninety-nine, and high is a hundred plus. That's kind of the Ride strike zone they, they gave us, so that's really been a conversation, but I would tell you, since our last meeting and even talking to many of you on the phone last week, a lot of things, a lot of discussions, a lot of things, you're seeing the news every night, right? I actually met with our task force, which you know, many of those folks on the team, we had a few meetings, I actually polled them in one of the meetings, I wanted to get them to see what they really thought, and here's what they're telling, telling us. Thirteen of them, I'm sorry, twelve of them are saying we should mask at school, three are saying we should have choice, and three have a hybrid, they suggest we mask eleven and under, and choice for the older, because the younger kids don't have the option for vaccination yet, so that's their, their position. I did speak at length two times to Dr. Karati, our district doctor, she advises us to mask, given the Delta variant, that's her, her position. Talking to districts every day, I'm seeing some, some staying with choice, some going masking, it's really, it's really across the board. I think it's unfortunate that the guidance from the state, as you've heard from other superintendents, was not definitive, so it causes thirty-six versions of this discussion, so we're all, most of us, I think, are not scientists or medical people, who are making a health and safety decision, which is unfortunate, but that's the spot we're in. In terms of the guidance from the governor, it strongly recommends we mask at school, but those same students could walk to McDonald's and they wouldn't need a mask, so it really is not, not consistent, not helpful. In terms of Ride, we have spoken to Ride on a few occasions, they did in one meeting relate, they cannot regulate health and safety with school districts. Superintendents pointed out, you regulated the peanut policy, you regulated Narcan, why can't you talk about masking? I think it's just convenient that they're not going to weigh in on this, so once again, it's, it's back to us. Let's see. So, my job is to give you a, a recommendation, and I am really a metric person, I, I like metrics, but even looking at the metrics right now, as I last saw the data talking to Ms. Smith, I believe on the phone, we were seventeen per hundred thousand on July twenty-fourth, thereabouts, the Projo came out with something, August fourth, we're at ninety-six per hundred thousand now in Cumberland, so that's, that's quite a, quite a jump, so I'm, given, I think that, you know, we have the CDC, pediatricians, Rideau, our district doctor, and now the metric of ninety-six, I'm recommending to you that we do mask, and I will certainly take that up in our discussions today, but before we do have the mask discussion.
Okay, all right, we need everyone, public comments will be after this discussion, please, we need you to be respectful and follow the agenda, this is an open public meeting, and please be respectful and wait until the public comments to come and speak.
So I'm sure we'll have a discussion tonight and next week, before we go there, though, a large part of this back-to-school piece is still the academics, and how are we going to close the learning gap, and Mr. DeMonica is really on that, I want him to talk a few minutes about what we're doing to really focus on academics, I think that's important to kind of get that on the table before we talk about the masking piece. So, Mr. DeMonica?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, everyone, again. So the objective in my office, as soon as the school year ended, is pretty simple, right? We've got to recover academically from the effects of the pandemic, however, the, the task of doing that is, is quite complicated, but we feel really, really good about our plan, we've been very strategic about the decisions that we've made for the positions that we're putting in place to help students recover academically from this pandemic across all content areas. You know, over the past six years, we know the story here, we've had great gains, we've been gone from a mediocre performing district, if that, to a high-performing district, and we did that with very specific focus, and we're not going to change that. We have a new baseline, of course, when the RICAS data comes out, we'll know just exactly where we stand, and we'll know precisely where to begin, and we'll start to set our targets and our growth goals. So I just want to reassure the committee, the parents in the community, that we are very, very hyper-focused on what we need to do to help their children recover grade-level standard proficiency, and, you know, we're trying to build a resilient system where we may bend, but we don't break, right? I do have a quick ESER update, if you don't mind, Dr. Thornton, sharing, if I could share. Mrs. Smith, a few meetings ago, I think it was a fiscal meeting, had some questions about ESER two, and I just wanted to share with the committee the most recent information, there is one shift that was made to the ESER two positions of the eleven positions, and that shift came from a need from the office of Dr. Santa, okay? Director of Special Services needed a pre-K teaching position due to enrollment issues that became a vital, critical piece that needed to be added, so Dr. Thornton had asked me to make that, make that shift, so the pre-K position went into ESER, and it was approved. The position that came out, it was just moved, it was not eliminated, is the interventionist ELA position at community school, but we feel like we'll get news soon on the ESER three funds and that we could, we could fit it in there. So that's a quick update on that, I don't know if there are any questions for me while I'm here.
So Madam Chair, just to wrap it up, the application goes in August 13th. If folks want to see the application, talk to us about it, happy to show it to you. On the Promethean Board, we can take you through it and show you where we are. Obviously, your discussions will finish the application as far as how we proceed with masking. But the busing pieces, those pieces are in there right now, the schedules, the classrooms, cleaning, et cetera. So just those few outstanding issues, and we'll have it in August 13th.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. So we will open this up for discussion by the school committee. Mr. Demont?
One question I have for Dr. Thornton at the moment is the no distant learning program that we, you know, RIDE says we're not going to do. Have we notified everyone that went distant learning last year about this policy? That you either come to school Cumberland, or you're going to have to put an application in for the home-school learning?
Yeah. Off the check, I don't have that tonight. I can have that for next week for you?
Yeah, we had just so many students go to homeschooling that we need to, you know, make sure they're aware of it on that. And is there a plan if we had to close the whole classroom down to go to distant learning?
Sure. If, that's part of our plan. If a classroom was positive, if you will, we had to send them home, we would still, you know, be teaching or instructing remotely, but it wouldn't be a year-long distance-learning event. It could be for the seven-day quarantine protocol. That would still happen. Instruction would still happen via the virtual.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I have a question maybe Ms. Dunkinson can answer regarding staff who have to quarantine. Are the same protocols in place when a staff gets sent home, has symptoms or whatever, as it pertains to sick time? Will they still be covered under the federal regulations that were in place last year? Or do they have to use their own sick time?
Is it on now? Okay. The federal regulations expired, I believe, in December 31st of 2020. So they are not covered by additional sick time. They would have to utilize their own sick time for that. If an entire class is removed to distance learning, then I think that that's a different question that we would address in accordance with the plan, because that entire class would have to be remote at that point.
So if we implement a policy where we force teachers to go home, they're not compensated for the sick time, that we force them to use?
Just remember that teachers, if they're vaccinated or not quarantined under the Department of Health.
Okay.
So they would be able to come in.
All right.
Ms. Smith? Sorry, I was going to wait to see if there was someone else. Just a couple of questions and a couple of facts that I like to offer. We had 752 students distance-learned last year for the entire year. They did not feel comfortable coming back into the school. We had over 100 students that left the Cumberland school system to go to private schools because of the uncertainties of knowing and wanting their children in five days a week. So I applaud the fact that we're going to finally be back to normal and have the children in every single day. But just some of the data. I don't know where ProJo received that information or how they published it. But through August 4th, on the Rhode Island Department of Health, we have only added eleven cases in one week. And the week before that, we had six cases. The state does report it as per hundred thousand as well. And that's when...
Okay. All right. Please, everyone.
That is when you see the numbers increase. So if you had eleven last week, that's going to add up to somewhere between thirty and thirty-five, based upon Cumberland's total population of 34,000 people. Right now, there's been an additional 191 people that were vaccinated fully last week, according to the Rhode Island Department of Health. The previous week to that, Cumberland residents, we had 22,209 people fully vaccinated. So we're talking about 34,000 in the entire town, yet, you know, we're looking at a very high percentage of people that have been fully vaccinated as well. And I believe that we need to take this into consideration when we're making our decisions. Parents went through a lot last year. We had a lot of classes that were quarantined. The largest numbers that we saw related to that quarantine were from the March-April timeframe, when outdoor sports began, and where teams were not masking, and where the state scholastic allowed them to take off those masks. I know here in the high school, we had a situation where, I believe, there were 12 people that were involved with that outside sports team. The Department of Health got involved. It took over seven days to notify anybody in the school about it. In the meantime, parents were getting calls from Department of Health saying, "Your child needs to quarantine because of contact tracing." They were involved. We weren't aware of it, and it sent almost 200 students into quarantine here at the high school. So these are things that we need to look at. This is definitely an interference to education, and it doesn't bring us back to normal. We don't have any way to test for the antibodies. We know how many are asymptomatic, how many last year could have been that didn't have tests that were asymptomatic. We do not know if they have it. Still through this date, in the state of Rhode Island, there have been zero children under the age of eighteen, zero, that have died from this. And trust me, I understand. I have watched people go through it. I know what it's like. My family was in quarantine. One of our members lost a family member. It is nothing that any of us want to worry about. However, we're talking about young children, thirty-two, according to Department of Health, only thirty-two students tested positive last year in Cumberland. However, we had hundreds upon hundreds that had to quarantine. Only thirty-five, according to, again, Department of Health, only thirty-five, I believe it was, or maybe even twenty, twenty-five teachers tested positive. I know of many teachers who went on vacation in April. I have pictures of it. I have, you know, parents from classrooms, even with my granddaughter, who thought it was funny that they could skirt the system and go to Florida on February school vacation. And guess what happened? Her class went into quarantine nine days later because of positive testing. So, you know, these aren't things that parents want to do. This is going to disrupt the year, and we are going to have problems. The masking, last year, we had so many cases, even though we had masking, even though we had students in part-time, up until the March or even May timeframe, depending on the age group and the RIDEcast testings. So we have a lot more to look at than just to say the Delta variant is there. The state is the first to say the Delta variant cannot really be tested. It is so difficult that they're not even testing. They are only testing certain patients if they feel that they're extreme enough that it could be related to the Delta variant. As of last Friday, the state only had confirmed forty-five cases of the Delta variant here in the state. That's a big difference. So while I appreciate and understand that we want to protect our students, we need to protect them in multiple different ways. The breathing issues, the heat and exhaustion, the passing out, the crying, the headaches. These are things that we've heard from parents, and some of us maybe have experienced with children. We really, we really need to look at the larger picture to determine what is the most important for their health and well-being in our schools. And I would not support masks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Settle down, please. Mrs. Feather, I would like to make sure that everyone is listened to as respectfully as you listen to Ms. Smith, please.
So before I, because I obviously prepared a couple of comments as well. Before I get into those, though, I actually think you just made a great argument for masking, because you talked about how we had all of these people in quarantine. We had all of these cases. And yet, the only times that you're saying that students actually got sick was when they were unmasked on these sports teams. So in my opinion, that actually makes the case for masks, because students were in class with other students that tested positive, and the masks worked. We know that the science works. I've been thinking about...
Excuse me. Excuse me. We need you to all be respectful, or we will end this meeting. Please.
I've been thinking about what to say tonight, and I've been thinking about laying out the evidence, because there is evidence that masks work. I've considered arguing, arguing the various points. But I realize that if you're against masking, you're against the science at this point. And as one person, one parent wrote this week, that we listened to the CDC before, and I'd strongly recommend that we listen to the CDC once again. Due to the circul, the CDC is, I understand that the CDC does not make the laws, but the CDC, they're there to actually try to keep us safe. And they are the scientists.
Excuse me. This is not public comments time. Please.
So the CDC statement that I pulled today was, "Due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students aged two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K through 12 schools, regardless of vaccination status." In my opinion, no other evidence is necessary. Is masking a nuisance? Of course it is. It's annoying. I don't like this. It's not great. And as a person, I've had asthma my entire life. So I understand that, you know, that wearing a mask is not fun. However, I wore a mask all last year for hours on end, for eight hours on end, for, at work and at various, at various school-related events as well. And it, now I can say, I didn't pass out. And I also don't think that we've had any documented cases of students passing out in classes in Cumberland. I know I've only talked to one school nurse about that, but I know that that one school nurse said that there were no documented cases in that school. Apart from masking, though, I'd like to recommend, as, well, I don't know if you recommended it, or if you just asked about the distance-learning piece. But I'd like to recommend that we do have the distance-learning piece in place for when there is an outbreak, because I do think that we need to have a plan in place so that, so that our children are protected. And, you know, I just really would hope that everyone is willing to get their, and I was glad to hear the numbers that Mrs. Smith actually, actually just listed off for Cumberland. I would hope that most folks who are eligible have been vaccinated and who also will vaccinate their children, so that we can try to keep all of our children safe. Personally, you can say that no children in Rhode Island have died from this. I don't want to have, I don't want to have that on my conscience. When a child is deathly ill in the hospital from Cumberland, or on the verge of death, I don't want that on my conscience. And I won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yes, Ms. Smith? I just wanted to clarify, Mrs. Feather. The 200 students that were isolated were from a sports team, and none of them, our students, tested positive. But we did have to shut down. Those people that were there unmasked did not get COVID either. And the other thing is that there are zero cases in Cumberland of students that have been hospitalized at any time through today. So that started in March of 2020 through today. That's what the Rhode Island Department of Health had stated. So just, just a couple of other facts that were there, just so that you have them.
Thank you.
And there were two ambulances called last year on the same day to community school. One for a teacher with a medical condition, and one related to a student. So I don't know what the outcome...
Know that that had to do with masking?
I don't know what the outcome was. From my understanding, at least one of them was due to an exhaustion with masking. Thank you.
So we don't have evidence that it was due to masking. We have hundreds of children, thousands of children, who masked all last year and did not have any exhaustion. Yes, it's not fun. No one likes it. I get it. But, but we didn't have any of those issues. The other thing that I also want to just bring up is that last year, we were not fighting the Delta variant. Last year, we were not fighting, I mean, last year, in Florida and other states, you weren't seeing kids hospitalized. Right now, you are seeing kids hospitalized at alarming rates in other states where they have opened up schools already. And, you know, children have died from COVID. And people, and you alluded to people on the board who have lost people. I've...
If you can't, if you can't keep your mouth quiet, you're going to have to leave.
I lost my stepfather to COVID. And we lost two other family members last year as well. I'm not having, again, I'm not having this on my conscience when there are kids sick.
Mr. Collins?
I have a question about the threshold that the, Dr. Thornton, that the, that RIDE has issued. What is the specific number in which they request that masks be put in place?
Unfortunately, they don't, they don't give you that.
Well, see, that's, you know, that's the problem. See, I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to masks, per se. But the question is, where does it end? You know what I mean? We have a Delta variant, but we have another variant. But we have first graders who have never gone to school without wearing a mask. It's not normal. So, no, no, stop, please. But the problem is, if we have an outbreak that mirrors what we had a year ago, I can get behind that with masks. But the problem is, we don't know anything about this, the thresholds, this whole willy-nilly ride, like, throw the mask on. My question is, when do they come off? Because we wore masks all last year, and the numbers are lower, were lower by the end of the year than they are now, and we're telling kids to wear masks. You know what I mean? So we can't go on, mask on, mask off. We have to get back to normal. And I'm not an anti, I believe in the science. I am vaccinated. I lost my father. So I get it. But we have to worry about the kids. I get emails from parents, like, well, my kids don't mind the mask. So hey, the other kids aren't your kids. You know what I mean? What about like an eight-year-old autistic kid who's non-verbal? We're going to make him mask for the rest of the year? I mean, my question is, where does it end? So we have to have a concrete threshold, if we're going to use a threshold to mandate masks. But more importantly, we need to know when the hell they're going to come off, because it's not learning, it's not living, and eventually, we're going to have to get back to normal. There are people in the world who are hell-bent, they don't believe in the science, they think the vaccine, the virus is a hoax, on one end. And then you have people doom and gloom on the other side, who think the world's going to end, and they want to stay in their houses the rest of their lives. But the question is, where does it end? What, you know, where do we go from here? Do we keep masks on until every virus is eradicated from the planet? You know what I mean? I think we're opening in the pathways, well, it's flu season, mask up. You know what I mean? I just, I don't like this. It's just one variant after another. We have to, I'm not saying, you know, there won't be a moment throughout this year, if God willing, it doesn't happen. But if all of a sudden, this becomes the new normal, that's not okay. It's, you can't learn in this environment. It, I mean, you can, but it's not what we, what we're here for. It's not what we're sending our kids into. So I just worry that we're just like, panicking over this. It sounds like this Delta variant is serious, but RIDE doesn't really have an answer for us specifically. They gave us a threshold, and I wanted to hear a threshold. I know I talked to Mrs. Rogalsky about this. What is this? You know what I mean? They have to give us a number, but tell us when these masks are coming off. So I don't know. I, I can't support a mask mandate when there's no benchmarks, there's no specifics. It's like, mask mandate, and then next March, maybe next August, we're still talking about masks. Because this is supposed to be over with. I know the virus isn't going away, but from all indications, it may be serious for the kids, but there are no fatalities. People who want to get vaccinated, and to Mrs. Feather's point, the outbreak in Florida, that's because people in Florida don't want to get vaccinated. That's what's driving the numbers up. It's not because they're not wearing masks in schools, and this is, this virus looming in the doorway. The people, look at the numbers across the country, Louisiana, Texas, Florida, they're not vaccinated. Alabama, Mississippi, they're not vaccinated, the Rhode Island and Massachusetts are. So I think that's kind of a moot point. So I, you know, I think we have to get to a place where we start looking towards normal. And I think normal is, right now, unless these numbers skyrocket, I think normal is, let the parents decide. You want Johnny to wear a mask, go ahead. My daughter, my youngest daughter's not vaccinated. She may wear a mask, but it doesn't mean it's fair to another kid. Just because I want my daughter to wear a mask, doesn't mean another parent has to make their kid wear a mask. Thank you.
Hold on. I know I don't have to say this, but... I know I don't have to say this, but you all know that the school committee is really in an untenable situation. We are being asked to make a just, a health and safety decision. None of us are medical professionals. We're trying to do it based on the best information that we can. Um, and I, I still ask everyone, including the school committee members, to make sure that we listen to everyone and we are respectful. Um, I've seen many comments on Facebook, um, and people who say, I, it's, we can respect each other, we can disagree and still respect each other. So I just want to make sure that we can keep that part of the discussion going. We, um, we all up here are trying to do the best we can, believe me.
And I would just, I would just add that-
Mr. Collins?
I think it's, I think it's pretty obvious, no matter what we decide with anything, you're not gonna make 100% of the people happy. And my advice about Facebook is, don't look at Facebook. You know what I mean? It's not the real world. People surround themselves with like-minded people and they feel validated. So if we're gonna let Facebook moms drive public policy, then we're screwed. I mean, honestly, it's because there's no, there's no discourse in Facebook. We subscribe to Facebook pages because we want to be validated, not because we want to be informed. And I, I just, I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, this is what we signed up for. There's gonna be conflict. But to your point though, there can be civil discourse. And from what I've seen tonight, there has been civil discourse.
Mrs. Feather?
Facebook moms and dads, they don't want to be sexist against, against women. Um, one thing that I actually just want to bring up as well, um, with, uh, around choice is, will kids get ostracized? If some are wearing a mask and others aren't wearing a mask, will kids get ostracized, made fun of? Is there going to be some sort of inequality in that if we allow for parental choice?
Mr. Demodica?
Ma'am Chair, um, school ended last year, the mask came off. Everyone went to the rec for the department. They did things in town. They're doing, you know, food at Diamond Hill State Park, et cetera. Right now, I, I think it should be the parents' choice if they want to send their child to school with a mask on or not. I mean, we're hearing it. I mean, eventually, if this Delta variant, um, comes up to Rhode Island and starts, you know, rate rising and rising and rising, that the government is gonna have to get involved in mandate everyone wears a mask in the school at the moment. Um, but for me, I think it should be the parents' choice at the moment um, until something changes that dramatically requires us to make wearing a mask in school. We know kids basically from middle to high school, hopefully all of them have been vaccinated. We don't know that. We won't know, you know, the only thing we've asked is our teachers, have you been vaccinated, yes or no? You know, other states, Florida, Louisiana, they've got those, they've got the people coming across the border who are uneven vaccinated for polio, things like that. And they're not being vaccinated. Now the government's talking about vaccinating them if they come over the border. Those areas have a lot of issues. We don't have that up here in Cumberland right now or Rhode Island. But, I mean, our advice, unless the school depart, school committee makes a policy that we vote on, that everyone has to wear a mask or whatever it may be, this decision ultimately is left with the superintendent of schools after hearing from us, hearing from the public, how we're gonna move forward, unless we make a policy in place for us that we, you know, say, J-19 or whatever it may be requires you to wear a school ma, a mask, you know, for the year 2020, you know, that's the only way I see it. You know, it's the superintendent, he is hired and by state, by state charter in law, he runs the school, the school system. He can only take our advice right now, um, unless we decide to do a policy on it. But, I mean, we have a lot of people here tonight that are questioning whether they want their child to have a, you know, mandate to have a child have a mask. And we've read all the Facebook stuff out there and things like that, and the emails. And I want to say thank you to all the parents that have sent out emails and stuff, you know. Been good reading sitting in the hospital for, for days on end. But, um, I think it's, you know, for me, I think it's gotta be parent choice this time coming around. And that's my, my only opinion, and that would be my advice to the superintendent, that we go with, uh, parent choice. Thank you.
Okay, and while we can't talk about it, um, because it's not on the agenda, just to clarify, we do have a masking policy, um, F1. Okay. Mr.?
Mrs. Rogalski, are you waiting? Mr. Collins?
If the committee were to vote on something like, um, vaccinated versus unvaccinated kids, I don't think that's realistic, because how do we enforce that? I think we gotta toss that out. The school nurses, first of all, and, I mean, there's a special place in heaven for them after last year. But how do we enforce it? Are we gonna put it on the teachers? You know, how do they keep track of 30 kids and their vaccination status? They're supposed to be teaching a lesson on Huckleberry Finn and they're trying to, they're sitting, spending their whole time trying to make sure the right kids have their masks on. So, I mean, I don't think there's a middle road. I think it's either parents tell their kids to wear the mask, just like they would tell them to eat their lunch. I mean, well, you know, and it's on, really on the kid. Or we mandate masks and I just don't think that's realistic either, obviously, uh, based on what I just said earlier. So I just think, I'd want to bear that in mind, that if, if the committee passes something in which we have to monitor vaccinated versus unvaccinated, logistically, that's impossible. We'd have to hire extra staff just to hand, walk around making sure the proper kids have masks on. Or, or you could tell me, who would be responsible for monitoring that?
I actually agree with you. I don't think it's, um, privacy issues, I think, would, would get in the way. We really can't, I think, you know, ask for a status of folks who are vaccinated and not vaccinated.
No, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just quickly, um, I, I agree with Mr. Demodica. If there were changes and there were things happening within our community that showed as they did back in March of 2020 with so much unknown and, and so many fast-moving parts that, that masks were needed, I would hope at that time that we would put masks on and we would need them. Um, at this time, you know, I, I said before, I, while I don't want a mask mandate whatsoever, I do think it's very important for parental choice. And I think that we're probably going to get an even split on that, um, between parents based upon what we've received for emails so far. Uh, and that is their choice. And, you know, as far as if there's any bullying or anything like that, I, I think that unfortunately, we deal with that day in and day out. You know, someone had to have a paper mask on today versus somebody that has a cartoon on theirs and kids are going to be kids and that's unfortunate and it puts a little bit more burden on the teacher. My one question would actually be for our legal counsel. And that is, if the superintendent were to make the sole decision related to this and there was any legal, you know, um, cases brought against the school system because parents felt that they were not given the option, thus causing them other burdens, um, to, to Mr. Collins' point, if, uh, the children, you know, somebody with a mask that's non-verbal or whatever it may be. Are we going to find ourselves with any legal ramifications with the school committee and the school itself? Are we going to be putting ourselves into any burden? Uh, I, I do know that there's been discussion, again, on Facebook, so we don't know the accuracy, of people banding together with legal counsel, uh, to make sure that they have their own choice related to their children's health. So I'm just concerned on, on what would happen there.
Wow. So, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Should I get closer? That might be bad for everybody. So there's a lot in that. First of all, even on the vaccine thing, to go back to what Mr. Collins said, it's an open question whether the school committee could require vaccines. The state of Rhode Island requires vaccines for a bunch of stuff. And it's just a list that happens to exist. It's not an exhaustive list. And I'm not sure that this school committee couldn't make a requirement of vaccines because you do have complete control of the public schools. I'm not advocating, I'm just saying that that is not impossible potentially. Uh, whether it would be in conflict with Rhode Island law, I don't believe it would because I did kind of look at this at some point. To your question, I mean, that, with respect to all of the things that are done in a public school, and this is one small part of it, all, all students, um, have rights under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, various other entitlement programs. Uh, they have freedom of, of religious expression, et cetera. And so if any action, you know, everybody wants to talk about masks, but we just try to make it more general. If the school department took any action that violated a student with disabilities' rights, then that student with disabilities would have a right to make a claim. Typically, that would be under the IDEA and it would be an administrative procedure. Um, but those are the types of things that could happen. I don't see any, as legal counsel, I don't see any particularized, uh, certain people are against masking, which is their right to be against masking, and the school department decides that masking 100% of students is the right call. I don't see any legal action that is a strong one. You can't stop anybody from suing in this country. But I don't see a strong case there that I don't want my child masked, you're saying they have to mask. To me, it's analogous to, there's a speed limit on the road of 35. I don't want to go 35. Why are you telling me I have to go 35? It's that sort of thing. I hope I'm answering your question, but if you have more, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. I think the only question I really have related to is, we are looking at RIDE, who puts a lot of regulations in place that we follow, and then, of course, the state itself and all of our Rhode Island general laws. And we're looking at all of that. And if we were to have the superintendent put a mask mandate in place when there's only a strong recommendation coming from everyone above us, I, I just don't know if there's recourse there, anyone, and whether or not the school committee, you know, would have, you know, issues or concerns as well.
Yeah, you never say never and never say always in my business. But, um, there is no one above you to that point. This school committee has the entire care and control of these public schools. The General Assembly doesn't, the governor doesn't, the Rhode Island Department of Education doesn't. There's nobody above you. So what you guys decide to do, you do. And with respect to, unless there is a conflict, unless there were a conflict with some Rhode Island general law, if there were a Rhode Island general law that was specific on issue X and you wanted to do the opposite, that could be a problem. But where no one has chimed in, or they've said, I think maybe you should mask, that doesn't preclude you from taking a more affirmative stance than a wishy-washy one, for example. And I'm not, by that, I'm not suggesting anything that anybody's taking a wishy-washy stance at RIDE or at, at the governor's office. Others may, but I'm not. Uh, so I don't see any, I don't see any issue there. Right now, and I know this isn't on the agenda, but I'm looking at this as trying to answer your question, the way the policy that you have in place now is drafted, um, this, the school committee empowered the superintendent to make this call, to make the call. Now, the, the call hasn't been made. He's making a recommendation as he sits here this evening. But at a certain point, you know, whatever the call is, it is the superintendent's to make per that policy. That doesn't preclude you from voting, voting down what he did or amending the policy so that it's no longer his call, or amending it in some other way. I mean, you guys are the school committee ultimately, and however active you want to be, and I, I don't disagree with, with what Mr. Demodica said about, you know, the superintendent is hired to be the CEO of this organization and run it. But I'm talking way more than I ever do, and I don't like this part of this. But that, no, 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 that's fine. I, I hope that helps to answer those questions as well.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Mrs. Feather, sorry.
So just a correction on numbers, because I'm on the RIDE, um, the Rhode Island COVID data response website. And last, or two weeks ago, we were at 17 in Cumberland per 100,000. Last week, it jumped to 81 per 100,000. And this week, as, um, as the Projo has reported, it's at 96. So we are seeing a stark increase in, in our town, unfortunately.
Um, Dr. Thornton?
Just one clarifying point. I know on a few occasions, it's mentioned about special education students and masking. There is a carve-out in the guidance from RIDE. If a student has an IEP and has some issues with masking, that's something that's in the IEP and they wouldn't have to mask.
So if I could just clarify on that, if someone does not have that IEP or 504 in place right now and the parents, if there was a mask mandate and the parents put in for an exemption for that, for whatever other health reasons may be, does that mean that the child would then have to have an IEP or a 504 and have special circumstances put around them?
That is my understanding. Any special circumstances, yes. It has to be through a process like an IEP or a 504.
And just so, just so we're clear on that, just because a student has a 504 or an IEP does not mean they do not have to mask. There would have to be some part of their disability that is related to their education that causes them to have a difficulty accessing their education such that removal of the mask is necessary for them to receive a free, appropriate public education. It's not, you have a disability and accordingly, you don't have to mask. It's not, it's not that at all. Okay? It may be a very, very small subset of students who have qualified under the IDEA, if that makes any sense. Hopefully it does.
Uh, Mr. Fiorella?
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify, oh my God. I just want to clarify the policy. Tuesday night, we will be having a policy meeting out in the foyer. And one of the four items will be the mask policy. Uh, last year, when we wrote the policy, it was a different circumstance. It was a different circumstance. Let me see that. Yeah. It was a different circumstance. Oh, thank you. That's what it must be. Um, it was a different circumstance. So we wanted to make sure that the superintendent had the emergency power to institute a mask policy right away. Last year, um, when Superintendent Mitchell put the mask policy in, it was right around the same time as a meeting, so the school committee also voted to just kind of give him our support in that decision. What we will do on Tuesday, I will propose some simple language just stating that if the superintendent would still have the emergency power to do it, but at the very next meeting, the, the school committee would have to vote to uphold it or rescind it. It would also, uh, if there was no emergency need, let's say like we're in August and still deciding what's going on, the school committee would just pu, put it on a future agenda for a full discussion and vote at that time. So it would definitely, it's definitely gonna be owned by the school committee. Because unlike the superintendent, the school committee is the one that's actually charged by the state to oversee the health and welfare, or the health and wellness of all the students and all the staff. That is, uh, from general law, I don't know what it is, it's 16 dash something.
1629.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Earning your keep tonight.
Ma'am Chair.
Um, Mrs. Rogalski, are you?
On, go ahead.
Or, I, I'm- Okay. Mr. Demodica, sorry.
So we would have to amend F, F1 in order to, um, amend the F1s about the face mask policy right now that we adopted. We all voted for it back then. Um, so we need to do that as well, um, next week. We would have it up on you. And then we would vote when the following week, or is it two weeks that we have to?
No, because it's an amendment, we would be voting, um, on the change on Thursday night to amend the policy. It's, it's gonna literally be like two sentences. It's just gonna give us more ownership. Uh, I know Mr. Dr. Thornton would just assume have us, uh, make that decision with him. I don't want to speak for him though.
I think in terms of, you know, how I'm used to working, I have to recommend typically what I believe is the correct call. You all are, are in charge, but I think it's a shared decision. But I think in the end, certainly, the school committee certainly has that right to weigh in.
Right.
And then, Ma'am Chair, the other issue I just wanted to bring up with, uh, Mrs. Smith had brought it up about kids going to athletic events and coming back. We had that issue. I know the coaches that are out there, they're bringing children to New York and New Jersey for wrestling things, uh, football camp. I don't know if it's in-town this year or out-of-town. In the past, it's been out-of-town. And it's maybe something that the superintendent's office may have to take a look at. And it's maybe something that the superintendent's office may have to take a look at, because he should be informed and approve if I think a, you know, athletic group decides they're going to New Hampshire for a track race, or whatever it may be, that not, you know, was not scheduled for us, but they want to take them to the Nationals, or whatever. I think a lot of that needs to be approved by the superintendent, because now we're mixing children, you know, throughout the state or a region, you know, in regards to this, and that's been a sore spot, that they just go without permission, and we need to make sure that they get permission, you know, to travel that's not on our schedule. Thank you.
Dr. Thornton, I'm assuming that we would be bound in some way by the interscholastic league?
We are, and I can regulate the RIL sports, the challenges, Mr. Demonicus. In this day and age, there are many, many clubs out of season with the same kids that could be on Club X and on our sports team, so we can't regulate the clubs that many of these kids are on that go to New Hampshire for softball or for running to New York. So that's the challenge, many, many clubs outside of our, our scope.
Mr. Collins?
You're going to have to pardon me with the numbers. I'm a history teacher, not a math teacher, so I tried working down the numbers here. So when we look at the rate of transmission per 100,000, so the number sounds startling, though, but if you look at last week's numbers according to Ms. Feather, that equates to less than six people in Cumberland who had COVID, if I'm doing the math correctly, which I'm probably not. And then, this number that skyrocketed in the past week breaks down to less than 29 people out of a town with 34,000 people. So if I'm doing the math, this could be my Spartacus moment, or it could be my most embarrassing moment ever, but I, that doesn't, when you actually look at the actual numbers, 29 people, that's less people than are in this room right now, in a town, one of the biggest physically, geographically large towns in all of Rhode Island. Now, if this was Central Falls, it'd be a little more staggering, with people more congested, but, you know, much of Cumberland is very rural, and I know that it's a moot point when we're talking about schools, but when you actually look at the numbers, I'm not, oh, 28 people in Cumberland have COVID? I mean, that's horrible, but that doesn't seem, when you put that in perspective, that doesn't seem all that staggering. I know, that's just, that's just one man's opinion, so.
And I think looking at the trends of how things are increasing is, is something, too. And we may, in three weeks, four weeks, when school starts, we could be in a totally different place than we are today. I think we all recognize that.
Well, and I think that's why.
Need the flexibility to, to change our minds.
No, but that's why, those numbers could also go down. I'm not a virus alarmist, so my concern.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, no, so that's why I just think a wholesale mask mandate right now, August 5th or whatever, I think is improper. I mean, to Mrs., you know, I think Mrs. Smith and I are in agreement, but those numbers could skyrocket, and that, and that, you know, if we start looking like Florida or Louisiana, that could be a different story, but when I look at these numbers in Cumberland right now, I'm not, I wasn't living in fear to begin with, but I'm definitely not living in fear, knowing that 28 people in all, the entire town of COVID as of last week, this week.
Mr. Fiorella?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Collins. I agree with Mr. Collins' point. The only thing I would add is, we shouldn't just look at Cumberland. I mean, let's face it, there are ranches out west that are the size of Rhode Island. We should at least look at Windsocket, Lincoln, Central Falls, to see what, we should kind of, kind of group this general area, because there's so much traffic back and forth. I think we need to look at it a little wider than just Cumberland.
Mrs. Feather?
To that point, my boss just reminded me the other day that the LA County, I think it is, district is bigger than all of Rhode Island's states, and all of Rhode Island's cities.
And it's far more congested.
Okay. Other, Mr. Rogalski?
So, I really don't want to talk. I, I don't, I don't feel that I am eloquent as other people are. I listen a lot. I have very strong, I mean, if you look at me high, you can figure out where I stand on the issue, but I have very strong personal feelings on this, that I have tried very hard to separate. I was told by someone on the committee, and I was told actually by someone else not on the committee before I joined, that families have the benefit of deciding for themselves, but when you are on school committee, you are deciding for all of the children. It's not just your child. And so I find myself, you know, I don't want to sit up here and talk, and I don't want people to boo me, I don't want that. I'm not, nothing I say here, I mean, let's be honest, this has become a very huge divide. Nothing that I say is going to change the mind of anyone sitting out there. Nothing that someone pro-choice is going to change the mind of someone who wants a mandate. It's, it's just, people are set in where they are. And so I think, and again, I, I have so many thoughts on this, and I have looked at the data, and yeah, the numbers, yeah, 29 doesn't sound like a lot, it really doesn't. There's a lot of people in town. I think what scares me looking at it, and yeah, I am scared. I'm overweight. If I get COVID, chances are, I'd probably die, let's be honest. And that's where I, that's, that's where I spent the past year living. I'm vaccinated now, I feel a lot better, but I am scared of this. I'm looking around, I'm the wife of a physician, my husband sees patients and brings who knows what home to our house. That's one of the reasons I wear a mask, because I don't know what he's been exposed to, and I don't want to expose anyone else. And so I am afraid, and I think it's okay to be afraid. I think it's, it's all right, you can't shame people for being afraid. And so getting back to that number, yeah, 29 isn't a lot. I think what scares me, or what worries me, is that we went from less than six to 29 in one week. Delta variant has an R factor, which means how many people, one person normally spreads it to, from the studies that they've done in India and in England, delta variant has an R factor of between five and eight. COVID, the alpha variant, had a factor of roughly like two, 2.3 to 2.7, I think were the numbers. So for every person that got it, you were likely to spread it to maybe two or three other people, but the delta variant, which is here, and it has been found in Rhode Island, in fact, they're saying it accounts for 93% of cases in the US, that has an R value of five to eight. I'd be really curious to see where our numbers are next week, and I hope to God that because we are well-vaccinated here, that we do have good numbers, that this can stay an unissue. Please, who doesn't want that? No one wants to see the spread of this, and I just, I feel like it's the jump, and it's the potential that scares me, and people will say, "Well, look at the numbers, no one has died." Actually, kids have died. Last week alone, St. Louis announced the death of an 11-year-old. The week before, they had two children die. New Orleans has had a child die, and I'm talking under 12 children. Like, it is happening, and yes, and parents will say, "Well, they had comorbidities." Okay, great. We have children here that have comorbidities, and it does scare me, and I feel like, and I'm just more explaining, I'm not trying to sway anyone, I'm not trying to change anyone's mind, I'm just, I'm trying to explain where I stand, because I think on other things, I've remained quiet, and I've just voted. And I kind of feel like I want parents out there to understand where I'm coming from, and kind of what my why is. And I know that a lot of you are not going to agree with me, and that's all right, you are entirely allowed to do that. But I also think, and, and I agree with Mr. Collins, you know, where does it stop? I mean, God, I was ready to burn my masks. I was so ready, I was so excited. I saw something the other day that said, "We were so close to precedented times," and I was like, "Yes." I was so ready, and now I'm watching the numbers creep up. We had a 20% increase in Rhode Island, we had, if you, that's a 450% increase in Cumberland. It sounds scary, but it's like, you're like, that's crazy statistically. Like, it's, the reality, the reality is that it is here, and then unfortunately, we don't live in a bubble. And when I spoke with Mr. Collins, yeah, I actually was in favor of parent choice. I was. I, I was like, "Yeah, things look good here, we're doing good, everything's good." And all of a sudden, the line is going like this, and it's like, "Oh, oh, wait a second, okay, hmm." And so kind of to their point of when does it end, is when do we start? What would be that dramatic? Do we have to have someone die? Do we have to have a certain percentage hospitalized? Like, we're, and so I think, to me, it kind of goes back to, I'm shaking, see, I don't like to speak. It goes back to, we make the best decision that we can up here as a committee, and we are human. We are human. We are not scientists. We are not physicians. We are doing what we can with the data that we see and that we are receiving, and we are having, the Department of Health, the Department of Education, the CDC, the Association of American Pediatricians, our school doctor, our task force, people who do this every day, and they're saying, "Mask." And so to me, I look at that, and I think that our job is to protect all the children of Cumberland, and I understand that parents want choice. Do I want my kid wearing a mask? No. But will they? Yeah, I already talked to my seven-year-old, she's like, "Sure." And I understand that some people have issues with it, and not everyone's kids, kids are like mine. I totally get that. I also know that we had, and I apologize for my rambling, I'm just thinking of different things, we had athletes participating in sports last year, we had our runners running races in masks, we had our basketball teams playing in masks, and there were no medical issues from that that I saw or found or anything, and so I just, I think, I fully understand and respect the parents who want the choice, and I respect the committee members here who want the choice. But I think when you're looking at the data, when you're listening to the science, when you're listening to the doctors, that it's telling us something different has to be done to protect all those children. And I also think that this is the only way realistically that we stay in school five days a week, because I think if we don't, we're going to see outbreaks, and we're going to see kids' classes quarantined, and no one wants to go back to distance learning, no one enjoyed that. And so I think also, that's just a whole separate issue, but I think this is our best chance of keeping schools open, is by masking. And again, I'm not here to change, no one out there is going to change their mind based on what I said. None of you are going to change your minds, and I just hope that you'll listen and you'll be able to see where I'm coming from as well, and where all of us are coming from on all of our viewpoints. And I agree with Mr. Collins that if we mask, I would like to see some thresholds, but I haven't the slightest clue as how you begin to set that. I don't know where that gets done. But that's just, and, and, you know, in another week, we'll have data from another week in Cumberland, and hopefully, the numbers will have gone down, and hopefully, everything will have gotten better. I would really, really like to see that. But we'll, you know, and in three weeks, things could totally change in either way. So, that's all.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demonicus?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank Mrs. Rogalski for speaking out tonight. Being on the school committee is a tough job. I've been here nine years along with Mr. Fiorello. And the first year is really a learning year. Do I speak up, do I say nothing, and so forth? You're, you're getting your feet on the ground, Mrs. Rogalski. Thank you for speaking tonight, because, you know, you, you have an opinion. You have a better opinion than I do, with my wife considering your husband is a physician. So I just want to thank you. Please speak up more often. Don't be afraid to, you know, sit back, and like I said, it takes a year, we're coming up in November soon, where you've been elected for a year, and you start speaking out, so please, don't hold back. Thank you.
I think that everyone has had a chance for the discussion part from the school committee. So I think we can move to the next item on the agenda, which is public comments. And so just a couple of, a couple, here's how it works, I think you've all heard this before. You state your name and your address. There is a three-minute limit, and Mr. Fiorello will keep track. And again, let's just be respectful and listen, and, you know, make sure that everybody's voice can be heard. So you can, I suppose, line up if you want to, kind of socially distanced if you want to a little bit, and we will, we'll go one at a time. Thank you. Let's see if Mr. Someone can help you.
Hear me?
Yep.
There we go. Okay. My name is Jody Lamagna, I live at 12 Highland Avenue in Cumberland. I am a science teacher at McCourt Middle School, and I hear what all of you have said, I've heard both sides of the argument tonight. I'd like to just sort of tell you what it's like as a teacher in a school. First of all, managing masks in a classroom, nothing has taken away from learning more than having to manage masks. Is your mask above your nose? Is your mask down here? Are you wearing a mask? Is your mask at your chin? Put your mask up. Okay, two seconds later, put your mask up. Two seconds later, put your masks up. I cannot get through a lesson if I am managing masks. It's very difficult. I also would like to say, we don't live in a bubble. That's very true. And in that sense, I think that masking at this point is almost a moot point, because the kids, next, this weekend, every single one of those kids is going to be at Cumberland fest together, hugging and kissing and shaking hands and riding the rides and being really close to one another and sharing food and sharing drinks. As soon as they get out of school, that is exactly what they're doing. They're out the door and the mask is off before they're even walking home. They're at each other's houses, they're sleeping overnight, they're together all the time, and at this point, at this point, they are moving, they are walking around in public with no masks on. I don't know how we would be able to say that the virus came from contact in a school when there's, at this time in our country, not a mandate for masks. I do understand that people are afraid. I do understand that there's people, my parents included, who are very fearful and have some health issues that they need to be worried about, and they can choose to wear a mask. And I guess I am an advocate for parental choice, because I just don't know what, really, what difference is it going to make if we mask in schools at this point with the way it is in the community? And also, as a teacher, I just, it's so difficult to manage. It's so disruptive. My, my, I can't tell you how much. These kids are going travel teams, they're traveling, they're with their other teammates in other places, they're, I just, I think that when you have such a huge outpouring of people who want parent choice, and there's so many other factors involved, that maybe parent choice is the way to go, because parents can always choose to put masks on themselves and their children. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Hi, I am Heather Bono, and I am at 8 Hickory Road. And the first thing I want to comment with all due respect is if we're counting nobody being taken out by an ambulance or passing out from heat exhaustion as a win, then we need to increase our standards. Here's what the parent, the children have reported to their parents after coming home from school last year on a daily basis. Headaches, dizziness, nausea, tired, staph infection, skin infection, anxiety, depression. I work in the mental health field, ER visits have skyrocketed because of this stuff. Parent, parent, I'm sorry, children have said that their teachers can't hear them, and they keep repeating themselves, so it's gotten to the point where they've just decided to stop answering questions. They also can't tell when their parent, when their teachers are smiling at them, at frowning, and the teachers have told me that they can't tell when a child is confused or perplexed because their face is covered. Somebody already spoke to, the next point I was going to make was, the children are in the community right now, my son went to altitude today with about 200 other kids, and there wasn't a mask in sight. He's nine. The next question I have for you is, what makes Cumberland different from the surrounding cities? Because I'm not sure if you're aware, but North Smithfield, Smithfield, Lincoln, and Swansea, Massachusetts, among others, have just gone parental choice. And guess what? Foster Gloucester, parental choice with a vote of seven to zero. I could also reiterate that 70% of Rhode Island is fully vaxxed, 90% of teachers in the schools are fully vaxxed, at least if they want to be. There have been zero deaths in Rhode Island that we've talked about, but there have been zero deaths in this country for children who are healthy. That is so important. Your child is more likely to die from the flu, and we have never likely to die from the flu, and we have never masked up for the flu. So, I implore you not to take away masks, but to let the parents decide at this point, is it worth masking up our children for seven hours a day in an air-conditioned building to deal with the psychological, emotional, and physical ramifications that we are seeing as a community when our childrens get home from school every day? Thank you.
Hi, Darlene Markot, 144 Boardman Ave. Mental health. You want some facts? I'm going to give you some facts. Science keeps on changing. This has been changing. They keep them. CDC says, oh, this, how many of this, it goes up and down. But this is a fact. My son, I had to try to get him in bed at Hasbro. Couldn't. Full capacity. Full capacity. I had to look into Massachusetts. Why? Because of that mask mandate. Can't breathe. He pulled his mask down, getting screamed at because his mask is down because he just wants to take a little breath. Got to the point that I pulled him from school. I can't do distant learning. I'm a full-time employer. Look at that. Look at that. You know, I have a job. Because of that, because I had to pull my son, I lost everything. My job, my 401K. I lost everything because of this mask mandate. I'm dealing with the courts for truancy. You guys sent me to court. My kid, who has high anxiety, can't handle even going out in public anymore because of this COVID thing, and the school was his little getaway. Can't do it. You know, I have to, I have to take him into like a physical therapy so he can get therapy so he can go outside. Just to go outside because he's scared shitless to go outside. Sorry, I'm swearing. So, if you want some facts, here's a fact. My kid is a straight A student. Yeah, we bunk school. You know, we'll go to the movies one time, bunk school and stuff, but he goes to school. But you know what I got? Don't you want your kid to succeed? Yeah, of course I want my kid to succeed. But I'm not going to make him wear a mask. It's not happening. I'm a parent. I choose what's right for my son. Not you guys. You guys aren't doctors. You're not scientists. You're a school committee. And I understand you have to vote, and I wouldn't want your job. I wouldn't. And I'm not against masking. What I want is, let us, we're the parents. You're not, you're not our children's parents. We voted you guys in to help us. Wherever, where's the community? Where is our community of Cumberland? And you know, you just, you can't, you've got to listen to the children too. I wish I could have brought my son here so he could tell you what he's going through. And the suicide rate? I wish I was more prepared. I wasn't even aware of this meeting because if I was, I would have my little computer and all the statistics and the numbers and stuff like that because the suicide rate is disgusting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Wagenheim. I live at 166 Hattie Ave. And obviously, this is a very, you know, polarizing topic. I get that. I think parents on whatever side you're on are passionate, and it's not a sin to be passionate for standing up for your children. I think it's a sin not to be passionate whatever side you're on. I think everybody in this room has the ability to find data that supports their agenda on either side, and then we twist that data and make what we want of it. So, I'm not going to go down the road of spitting out data. I'm going to look at this in general terms and say it this way. The school committee and the superintendent has the responsibility to provide an environment that students feel safe learning in. I think that might be your biggest responsibility. And when students go to school wearing masks, they might be uncomfortable. They might not enjoy wearing masks. I don't enjoy wearing masks. But they're not going to school saying, I feel unsafe because I have a mask on. And I do work in a school system. On the flip side, when students are wearing masks, all the complaints I got last year about students who are uncomfortable, uncomfortable about stuff, were when students came to me and said, I'm really bothered because the people sitting around me keep pulling their mask down and talking to each other, or that student's wearing a mask below their nose. And that's when the students felt uncomfortable. So, now if we open up the window where people can have that choice, you're going to create an environment where a lot of kids are going to be sitting in a classroom every single day feeling unsafe. And I'm really speaking more for grade six and under. When it gets to the age where people have access to the vaccine, I do think it's a different argument. But at the ages where people don't have the ability or access to the vaccine, I think you're creating an environment where a lot of students are going to feel very unsafe going to school every day. And then last, last thing I'll say, you know, responding to Mr. Collins about what, I agree, the threshold, RIDE's given you nothing to work with, and that's terrible on their end. You need numbers. You need thresholds. My opinion is this. The threshold for those younger grades is when the vaccine is readily available to everybody. At that point, people can make choices. But until the vaccine is readily available, I do not believe that people should be, have the option, I guess. So, that's all I have.
Hi, Amy Godak. I live at 5 Candida Court. I am a teacher in the Cumberland Preschool. I have special education students in my classroom. Many of them did not wear masks last year because they just are not able, a three-year-old who's nonverbal, who has issues with regulation is not going to be able to wear a mask. But I'm also a parent, and my son is in first grade or going into first grade. He has a history of respiratory failure. He almost died. He had a feeding tube and a breathing tube. And this was from a common childhood virus. If my son gets COVID, he will die. I am sure of that. My son wears a mask. My son does not go on playdates. My son has the right to a free and appropriate public education. I fear my son going to school every day, and I teach in the district. He needs to wear a mask. He's very vigilant about wearing a mask. But if someone else is not wearing a mask, he is still exposed to their germs. Masks are not 100%. And I understand that parents have the right to choose for their children. And if my son had access to the vaccine, I would get him vaccinated. He doesn't have access to the vaccine. It's not approved for him. His pediatrician, his allergist, his ENT, all have said to me that he needs to wear a mask and that he needs to be in places where people are wearing masks. He doesn't have the option of distance learning this year. So, and I work full-time. I cannot homeschool him. So, I think that we need to look at the difference between children who have the option of being vaccinated and choose to be vaccinated or not, wear masks or not, and families who do not have the option yet of vaccinating their children.
Hello. My name's Shannon McClure. I live at 65 Rolling Meadows Road in Barrowville. So, while I'm not from town, I am a teacher at North Cumberland Middle School and would like to voice my opinion. I'm here to voice my opposition to the mask mandate in school because I'm at the strong belief that mask-wearing should be optional. If you want to wear it because it makes you feel safe, I fully support you. But if teachers and parents do not want to wear masks, if they're confident that that's the right decision for themselves and their children, I support that as well. There are many studies providing data that show masks are harmful. Currently, there are 42 peer-reviewed scientific studies supporting that masks do more harm than good. They trapped exhaled carbon dioxide, water droplets, as well as bacterial and viral particles, which are then re-inhaled, leading to issues such as hypoxia, acidification, and respiratory issues like bacterial pneumonia. This mindset of sick until proven healthy really needs to stop. As a teacher, I experienced firsthand some of these effects of masks. Daily headaches, dizziness, nausea, and also overwhelming anxiety because I felt like I was suffocating, especially when it was warm. It was, you know, it's hot in the school and you're wearing a mask and you're trying to address a whole classroom of students. It's very overwhelming. In addition, masks do also pose legal issues, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but masks along with COVID tests and the COVID vaccines fall under emergency-use authorized products. That being the case, according to federal law, 21 U.S. Code 360 BBB-3, the Emergency Use Authorized Informed Consent Law, American citizens under federal law have the right to either accept or refuse EUA products. While schools are often guided by the CDC, RIDE, and the Department of Health, these bodies do not have the right to mandate emergency-use products. It's against federal law. They are not legislative branches and do not have legal power. I would encourage people in this room to look that up and be aware of your rights because if you don't know your rights, you have none. That being the case, my question to you... That being the case, with all due respect, because I know that we all have different viewpoints, and this is very like emotionally triggering, but with that being the case, my question to you is, how will you accommodate the federal law, which provides individuals the right to opt out of emergency-use authorized products? As individuals and parents, each of us has the right to make medical decisions ourselves. It's up to the adult individual to determine how to best manage health decisions. I'll protect me. You protect you. Let parents protect their kids. That's why I strongly believe they should not be mandated, but be optional. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. DeMonica.
Just before she goes away, could she give us that code again? Because I'd like to go get it. And I know I saw our attorney starting the write as well. Just if you could give it to us.
Yes, it's 21 U.S. Code 360, Section BBB-3.
Section BBB?
B, as in boy. BBB-3. It's the Emergency Authorized Use Product Informed Consent Law, which clearly states that you need to have informed consent, and then you have the right to accept or refuse.
Great.
Yep. Oh, it's right here. Someone has it printed out.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jake Thurman. I'm 17. I'm going into my senior year at Cumberland High School. I live at 3 Camp Street in Cumberland. First, I wanted to start by saying that I play soccer in the fall, and then I run indoor track and outdoor track. And this year was strange. I'll start off with that. Playing soccer with a mask on is near impossible. Not a single player on that field had their mask over their nose for the duration of a game because it is impossible to run some four miles a game that we run at the high school level, every single game. Every player runs about that as long as you're playing for at least half the game. And that is near impossible to do with a mask on, with restricted breathing. Once we moved into track for indoor, obviously, we're in a confined area. But I'll tell you that finishing a race, even a short-distance race, which I run, you feel lightheaded, feel like you're going to pass out. I think I saw probably more than half of the people who run throw up after races because we're not getting enough air. That's on sports. Now, in outdoor, we were allowed to take our masks off for all of our races. We saw times improve, health improved. People weren't close to passing out anymore. And again, that helps to be outside. But it's a huge difference when you have a mask on versus when you have a mask off in sports. We also had one single COVID case on our soccer team, which derailed our entire playoffs. We all had to go into quarantine, but we had one case that did not spread. We also had one single case in the entire track season of COVID that did not spread to a single other member of the track team despite the fact that none of us wore masks. Some of us had to quarantine, but we were somewhat separated, and others didn't have to. But it did not spread. So, I wanted to make that point about sports. And then I also had a question for all of you. It's just by a raise of hands, how many of you are familiar with the court case Tinker versus Des Moines in the Supreme Court? You can raise your hand. Yeah, just, just a lawyer. Okay, so, that, that court case is about freedom of expression. In the 1960s, a couple of kids decided to go to school wearing armbands to protest, and the school told them that they were not allowed to. The Supreme Court ultimately ruled that students have freedom of expression as long as they are not substantially disrupting the school day. So, my mother's a teacher. She spoke, Jogi Lamagna, she's a teacher here, and she talked about the disruption to the school day that every single minute of class has with the mask problem. I've sat in the classrooms with all of my fellow students, and every five minutes, we have a teacher disrupting class or a student disrupting class over a mask. It is essentially unconstitutional to force a student or anyone to wear a mask during school because, one, it's freedom of expression, and, two, by forcing them, you are disrupting the school day every five minutes, and it just doesn't work. So, thank you. And one more thing. I will not be wearing a mask when I go back to school, and I expect to have my right to public education. If I am forced to wear a mask when I go back to school, I will not be going back to school in this school district, and you can see a court case for that. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Lisa Cannon. I'm a pediatrician, and I live at 105 Arnold Drive. So, I stood before, well, didn't stand before you guys because we were on Zoom last year, but I Zoomed before you guys. And last year was a passionate advocate for parental choice in returning our kids to the classroom because it is so vital that our children be in the classroom. I 100% side with everybody here that this pandemic has been tragic towards children's health. Mental health is indeed suffering. I'm not sure that this is because of masks, however. I think it's much more likely that it is due to a disrupted school year. And I, like last year, am advocating again for our children to be in a classroom. That is, to me, the most important thing that we can do for our kids, is get them in person, in front of a teacher, in a safe environment. I'm really glad nobody in this room knows anybody that's died of COVID. But I am a pediatrician. I have friends who have managed children who have died. There are seriously ill children out there, and we should all be grateful that this has not happened in our town or our community. But this is a real thing. And those children out there, the 300-ish that die, it may not seem like a lot to you. It may be less than the flu. But those 300 kids, they were kids too, and they deserved a happy, healthy childhood, and that was taken away from them by COVID. This is a simple intervention that we can, we can provide for students that, first of all, will limit, in many different studies, has been shown to limit the spread of COVID in the classroom. In multiple states throughout our nation, internationally, there has been shown time and time again that strategies such as social distancing, wearing a mask, have reduced the spread of COVID. This also has been shown to be true in the opposite, in that when people do not wear masks, for example, a large outbreak occurred in Israel last year when there was a heat wave, and they did lift their mask mandate. It is possible to transmit COVID as a child. It is possible to get COVID as a child and get really sick. So, we need to take these considerations very seriously. And the thing about this Delta variant that nobody has brought up is that there is evidence, especially in Massachusetts, which is one of the most vaccinated states in our nation, they have also had a COVID surge recently, and a recent cluster of cases that occurred in Provincetown, Massachusetts, was spread by people that were vaccinated. So, this can be spread by vaccinated persons, which is why a mask mandate should be for everybody, not just for those that are not vaccinated. Personally, as a parent of children under 12 who do not have access to a vaccine, this is the crowd that I'm the most concerned about because my kids don't have that choice. I can't get them vaccinated yet. And if I'm going to be sending them back into a classroom, I want to know that even if that risk of death is very small, that they're not going to be one of those 4,000 cases of that M S C, that inflammation that happens after COVID. That is seen nationwide. We have had kids, up to 8%, actually have kids in a recent study from the UK, developed long-haul COVID symptoms after having COVID infection. And I've seen elite athletes who were once running a soccer field back and forth many times, who now can't go one length. Like, in my practice, this is something that actually happens in real life. So, I realize this is a tough decision, and I know my opinion is not a popular one tonight, but I just stand before you and advocate that our kids deserve to be in the classroom, and they deserve to be safe and healthy. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Jason Trati. I live on 56 Governor Street. I'm going to preface what I have to say, and thank you all for listening to us tonight. How many of you wore masks when you were a kid, when you went to school? Anybody? Anybody in here ever wear a mask for seven hours a day? Yeah, I didn't think so. Okay. I wanted to discuss the upcoming school year and the issue of requiring children to wear a mask at school. We have, myself and my wife, have three children in the school system, one with ADHD, who is bothered by wearing a mask day in and day out. At baseline, he has trouble with his concentration, and the mask has made his already challenging body control even worse. Our youngest has diagnosed with developmental delay and is being forced at the age of three to wear a mask, even though she has language delay and attention issues. And my other question would be, how can she do speech therapy when a mask on? Anybody? Have any answer for that? Even though our middle child saw an increase in allergies last year and head Even though our middle child saw an increase in allergies last year and headaches, and we had to pull him out to put him in private school, because he could not go in person. So we had to send him to Massachusetts and pay an exorbitant amount of money so he could go to school. As you determine what the school will look like in the fall, I urge you to consider the following information. Not even one child died of any variant COVID in Rhode Island during this entire pandemic, and this was without a vaccine. Children are extremely low risk of COVID complications, and medical literature consistently indicates that they are not the primary method of viral transmission. They are barely spreading or getting COVID. The burden of COVID virus, with all the variants, cannot continue to fall on the shoulders of our children. That is a burden that we should bear, not kids. They are the least affected, yet most affected, by mask mandates, because their developmental windows are brief. I urge you to prioritize them by making masks optional this year. Optional masking wouldn't bar anyone from wearing a mask, but it would allow families to make choices based on their individual circumstances and needs. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak. My name is Christine Manning, 155 Sun Valley. I was not planning to speak this evening, but after seeing many of these people with the same concerns that I do, I decided it was time to speak out. I have two children in the middle school here in Cumberland. I am also a teacher assistant in another school district. I work in an autistic classroom, and I have seen firsthand what these masks do to children. These children used to be happy, carefree, be able to say or do whatever they wanted, whenever. Now, they feel as if they are obstructed by these masks, not only just the bare, basic intake of air, but just in the fact that they cannot converse with their teacher freely. They cannot ask questions to their classmates. If they have missed a simple question, they feel that they have to stay silent. They don't need to be silent anymore. My children personally have allergies. I have allergies. This fall, this spring, were no easy season for allergies. We were all stricken with the worst symptoms. And yet, we had to go in with our masks on, and we feared that someone might think we had COVID. We didn't. We had seasonal allergies. And we had to suffer through all this, trying to breathe at a normal pace. We couldn't. My children came home with anxieties. They both have learning disabilities. One son has dyspraxia, which you may not be aware of, but it is a dysfunction with vocal. He cannot, in a timely fashion, get his words from his head out to his mouth on a timely manner all the time. Teachers have a hard time understanding him. So instead of trying to put forth more effort, he shuts down. His work has decreased. He used to be a top student. Now he doesn't want to put in the effort. I don't blame him. Why would you want to? No one is there to help you. My other son has ADHD. He has anxieties. His stress level and concentration were through the roof. They would both come home stressed and upset. This is not how I want their day to go. Why should I have to worry what my children are feeling all day long, because they are stressed, because they cannot breathe? They cannot concentrate. They are forced to put the mask up, put the mask down. It's okay if we do it here, but it's not okay if we do it here.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. It's over the time. I'm sorry.
I thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Daniela Duarte. I live at 32 Chamber Street in Cumberland. I come here with a unique perspective. I am a mental health counselor in the field, in the community. I treat children, up to adults. I have been for the past 16 years. I've worked in disadvantaged communities. I've worked in wealthier communities. So I see the gamut. I am not confined to one particular, excuse me, area. But I'm also a parent. And so what was particularly challenging for me as a mental health counselor, getting thrown into COVID, like we all were unfortunately in March of last year, was having to deal with my children psychologically declining at the same time as managing my clients. And, you know, everybody else in my family, including myself, because we all felt there, I know that. One major thing I saw was an increase in anxiety, not only in my children, who had been pretty stable throughout, never really had any big, major concerns, but now, school avoidance. We hate school. We are tantruming. We are throwing things. And I mean, I know everybody has this with the distance learning that was god-awful. But then cue in the masks. They were so excited to go back to school, and at the beginning, they're like, I don't care. I'm gonna wear a mask no matter what, until the worm mother had. And now, mommy, I can't breathe, mommy. So it wasn't just my kids saying this. Mommy, I'm getting really anxious in school. My teacher won't even let me take a break. I'm trying to go to the bathroom, but only two people can go at the same time, blah, blah, blah. I'm hearing it in my clients. Didn't matter what community they were in. It didn't matter if their community was high transmission rate, low transmission rate. Didn't matter if they were distance learning or in school. This collective trauma of COVID that has been made worse by the propaganda that this news is spreading, there is truth in what we're all saying, okay? The anxiety that we're all feeling as parents. I don't envy your position. I can't imagine how difficult it must be to be in your shoes. I wouldn't want to make that decision either. At the end of the day, we need to hear everybody out. We are not gonna make everybody happy. But we cannot accommodate the anxieties of a few to appease, you know, to make everybody else, I take that back. We don't want to stress the majority to appease the few. COVID rates are not what they are published to be. It is a gross exaggeration. Delta variant is out there. It absolutely is. And it is highly transmissible, that it is. But do we ever talk about what the actual symptoms are? They're likened to a cold. I'm not scared of my kid getting a cold. They get worse allergies. They've gotten the flu. My daughter's had pneumonia from the flu, pre-COVID. I'm not scared. She wasn't wearing a mask. She needed an inhaler. She was out of school for a few days. When do we go back to normal? When do we stop demonizing these children and putting this burden on their shoulders that is not theirs? I had to stop my children from talking back to their teachers, because they got so upset. Kids in their class feeling the same way. Mommy, my friend in school got in trouble, because he told his teacher, these masks are stupid. They don't work. I don't want my kid to be resentful. I teach my kid respect. That even if you don't agree with somebody, you respect them. And I had to tell her, that's my fight to fight, so I will fight it for you. That is not yours. So please listen to us and give us a choice. I respect anybody who wants it, but please respect people who don't.
Thank you, Mrs. Duarte.
Good evening. My name is Eric Reifra. I'm from 68 Oakwood. Listening to a lot of the people tonight, and listening to a lot of what's been going on here, I'd like to take a little bit more of a, I'd like to take a broader philosophical perspective on this. You know, I hear a lot of talk about the science this and the science that, but I haven't heard from anyone. Here, in our government or in our media, is cost-benefit analysis. None of it. We are not weighing in the good against the bad. We're arguing about things none of us understand, and I would include all the way up to the CDC. I don't think they do. I certainly don't trust the WHO. Not at all. An institution is not science. So when we hear people say things like, follow the science, be careful you're not engaging in dogma. Scientology is probably the worst thing that's infecting this country right now. The blind belief in administrators, and not actually following the methodologies of science. It is not really what science is, and history has taught us that. History has taught us that for a very long time. You know, back when the Big Bang Theory came out, La Metro was a Catholic priest that invented the Big Bang Theory, who was rejected, because, why? Because he was religious. Because the entire atheistic community and the secular community thought, he must be trying to come up with some way of making God the reason for the universe. And I see this as an atheist. Many people died 100 years later rejecting, remaining with the static vision of the universe. Many of them died, went to their graves, because they just simply refused to accept the Big Bang Theory. And you know who these people were? The heads of scientific institutions. So be very careful when you say, follow the science. Right now, what I read today is that the cloth masks have shown in CDC studies to be only about 50% effective. And it depends on what country you go to. You get actually different results from that. As high in Korea, they say they're 90% effective. Japan say they're 70% effective. One thing I've been seeing lately, is these cloth masks especially, seem to be 50% effective, but 100% a virtue signal. They're not necessarily doing what everybody seems to think they're doing. This has gotten out of hand, because I think we've decided to tribalize science. And we need to stop doing that if we're ever gonna get ahead as a country, or as a planet, as a matter of fact. But if there's one thing I do know, and I do see around me, is a lot of fear. Fear, fear, fear. Fear is the mind killer. And I'm gonna say right now, every country that's ever existed on this planet has probably died because of having too much fear. This notion, this idea, that we're gonna, if one child dies, we should shut existence down, has to stop. It has to stop. We do not live in a perfect universe. It's out to get us every day. But we have to try to continue living our lives. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Thurman. I'm going into my junior year here at, I'm going to my junior year here at CHS. I live at 3 Camp Street. I have a brother. Well, we all had COVID back in March. I know that us, my brother and I, had much easier cases than our father did. We, you know, had the sniffles, and we were nauseous for a little bit, and that was it. And I know that us, as our generation, is much less likely to have severe cases than older generations. So, and I know that a lot of my friends and our generation does not want to wear the masks anymore. And we just want to be done with this and go back to being normal and having normal childhoods in school. That's all I have to say.
How's everybody doing tonight? I'm Alex Hong. I'm going into my sophomore year here. And I just want to say that, starting off as a freshman, it was not a year that I expected it to be, or any of us expected it to be. I barely learned anything, to say the least. I would fight my parents to go to school, because I didn't want to wear the mask. And if I stayed home, I would play video games and sleep all day. I didn't do anything. I barely passed because of it, but I just think that these masks should be optional, because for these students that don't want to wear these masks, I don't find it fair because of it. And same with sports. It tragically affected all of us. And that's all I really have to say.
My name's Christian Nartiz, and I'm a sophomore, or I'm going into sophomore year here at CHS. And I live on 58 Edgewood Avenue. And I just think masks should be optional, because honestly, going to school as a freshman, first year, expected it to be a fun year, know everyone, see everyone I know. And we're all wearing masks. We can't go to certain parts of the building, have to stay seated. No lunch, because we're all wearing masks because of COVID. We have to, we can't really talk, can't really do anything. Hard to hear the teachers. When we have distance learning, we can't really learn at home because of COVID, just because one student had close contact to one of us, and we all have to get sent home. And I personally had to be sent home for like three months, because I was in close contact. Never caught COVID, but was sent home for like three months. And I just thought it was unfair for my education, how I had to sit at home staring into a computer for seven hours, not really learning anything, distractions everywhere. And I just thought it was unfair how we just had to wear masks and be sent home when someone had COVID, when no one really had, when I never got COVID, when I could have been learning in school, but I was sent home because of close contact. But that's all I have to say.
My name is Ian Kelleher. I live at 23 Pound Road. And I'm new to this high school. I'm going into my freshman year. And all I have to say is that I had a very hard time in my eighth grade year, because I was told hundreds of times to put my mask up, and I refused to wear my mask. I never caught COVID, but my friends have. And it was really hard to learn in eighth grade, because I was just multiple times getting told to put my mask up. And I learned a lot of things, but it was not like seventh grade where I was passing. And summertime, I took my mask off. I was having the best time of my life. And I just don't agree that we have to go back into school wearing masks, because if you really want to wear it, you can. But I agree not to wear it. I haven't worn a mask since we left school, so that's all I have to say.
Hi, Jason Ramblad. I'm Grove Street in, actually, One Socket. I have three grandchildren, and One Socket School is not here in Cumberland, but you guys are close enough. I come to Cumberland with them. I do activities with them. I'd like to have them out in public. I was gonna just sit in the crowd and be quiet, and just listen in to how Cumberland was rating. But other districts are, have leaned to not mandating the masks. And I noticed that there's nine years up on stage. Two years do have masks, seven don't, and that's by choice. Don't take the choice away from the parents in this community. Thank you.
I know I've already spoken, but I just want to say how proud I am of the students that came up here to speak today. Two of them are my own. One of them is a close friend of the family, and another student, who is Alex, I had as a seventh grader in my science class. And it saddens me to hear what he had to say today about his grades, because he's a very, very smart young man who excelled in my class. And I'm a hard grader. And it makes me sad to think that these kids, instead of having their childhood, and instead of playing games with their friends and playing sports, or worrying about, you know, where they're going Friday night to hang out, or worrying about whether or not they have a choice in school. I'm proud of both of my sons for what they had to say. I feel bad that my 17-year-old has to worry about whether he's gonna bring a court case against the school, because he has to, you know, maybe wear a mask that he doesn't think is part of his constitutional rights. I mean, I don't know what the answer is to that question, because it hasn't been asked yet at the Supreme Court. But I think that these kids, to even see them here at a school committee meeting, is exemplary for them. And I hope you will listen to what they have to say, because I have seen so many children robbed of normalcy. And I think that the long-lasting effects of what we're doing, what's happening to our children because of COVID, I don't think we can even imagine what we're gonna deal with in the days to come. And I think they should be able to see their friends' faces and be able to have a conversation with them. But I'm just very proud of those kids for coming up and speaking.
How you doing? Brad Dean, 104 Brent Swamp Road. Heard a lot of personal testimony tonight, situations, personally, touching all sides of the aisle. Question, do you guys ever go on the actual CDC website and do any research? Okay, well, if you have, you would realize that there's been 332 deaths from the age of zero to 17 from COVID. There was 432 deaths from the flu in 2019. There were 600 deaths, same age group, in 2018, okay? We haven't been walking around masked for the last 10 years because of the flu, okay? You get your flu shot if you want it, and then you go about your business. We're not gonna eradicate sickness. People are gonna continue to get sick, no matter what, okay? We keep talking about the cases, the cases, the cases, okay? sick no matter what, okay? We keep talking about the cases, the cases, the cases, okay? I like to think that cases are one number. The deaths should be another number, okay? And I know it's morbidly, but the kids have a ten percent chance of dying in a car accident more so than they do from COVID in that same age group. And if you go on the CDC website, you will see this because it's all right on there, okay? I invite all of you to go to it. Just look up the data and stats. It's right in front of you. Because everybody seems to be following the CDC regulations, correct? And that's where we're living our lives based on right now. You actually have a less risk as a child from getting COVID than a vaccinated adult. I mean, these numbers should speak volumes. In my opinion, it's not worth taking the kid's childhood away from them just because we have a fear about a disease and want to wear masks.
Darren Thurman, Three Camp Street. This is gonna come as a shock that I oppose a mask mandate as well. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for exercising your right to be here and be here in person and share your comments. We do really appreciate that. So...
Motion to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned at eight thirteen PM.